Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for April 4th, 2022. We have a motion to go into executive session to discuss contractual negotiations and matters pertaining to the specific employment of particular individuals.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have a motion to go back into public session?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education for April 4th, 2022. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the father-in-law of Daniel Ziegler and the mother of Teresa Faffenberg?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, and God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry we are late coming back. Our first thing is public comment number one for gender-related items, and we were told nobody signed up, correct? Okay, so we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone, welcome. I also echo Jackie's apologies for us starting a few minutes behind schedule. Thank you for being here this evening. We wanted to provide some updates for our school community. I just want to share a couple of special announcements. Crompond Elementary School teacher Adele Kivell was recognized by the Lyric Lower Hudson Regional Information Center as an outstanding technology innovator, and we're just so proud of Mrs. Kivell. There was a celebration in her honor and all of the awardees' honors on March 24th, and what a wonderful, what a wonderful acknowledgement of the fine work that's happening in so many of our classrooms and as reflected in Ms. Kivell's classroom and in Kivell land as it's affectionately regarded. I also want to acknowledge our 22 students who were recognized at the WESF Science Competition. Our students performed absolutely brilliantly. They were so remarkable and so impressive, and the awards reflected that. I also want to share a quick shout-out and acknowledgement of Yorktown High School junior Rakapos who qualified for the Genius Olympiad. She was our only Yorktown student to qualify for either ISF or Genius, and that is just a tremendous, tremendous honor and a great representation for our school district. Today marks the beginning of National Assistant Principal Week, and I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the assistant principals in our school district. So much of the work that they do is behind-the-scenes, and it really is a thankless job, and all of the time and effort that they invest in, from the instructional leadership standpoint to the safety and being a resource for students, faculty, parents alike. So just a heartfelt thank you to our assistant principals throughout the school district. I also wanted to update the community on a couple of items. We are looking at space in our schools. As you know, there are some developments that are being considered throughout town. There are more than one development being considered throughout town. We're looking at what the implications are. It's not an immediate turnaround time from a construction standpoint. The approval process at the State Education Department is a lengthy one. The planning process on the district's end is a lengthy one. So what I'd like to do is invite our construction managers to come to a future Board of Education meeting, if that's okay with you, to present their perspective on where we are currently for space, what are some short-term things we can do, and then just what are some long-term ideas. So if that's okay with you, I'll schedule that presentation.
Yeah, just a quick clarification, though. My understanding is the space needs aren't, the immediate space needs aren't necessarily because of construction, building that we're thinking of what's going to happen in town. It has to do with programmatic needs within our buildings, correct?
Absolutely. So there are some short-term needs that we have, some immediate space needs that we have, and that's a function of program, student needs, capacity within our schools and current enrollment. And then there are some longer-term, two, three, four, five, 10 years down the road, where do we see ourselves from an enrollment standpoint, a programmatic standpoint as well? So yes, there are dual questions that we're asking, one short-term, one long-term. In terms of, just two other items or one other item before we go into the presentation this evening, just want to update the board on the book reviews and the book committee reviews. At this point, I have received two reports from the committee. The recommendation for the middle school is that the title be returned into the library with a young adult sticker, which is a practice that we have adopted in the middle school for a number of years. I have accepted that recommendation, and therefore books will remain available in the library. And then for "The Hate U Give," which was another title in our high school, that committee report, I received that March 29th. March 29th. I've accepted the committee's recommendation. The books will remain available in the high school library. At this point, I have not received the other reports, and as I do, obviously, I'll keep the board apprised of that situation.
What was the title of the first book?
Lawn Boy. Okay. Yes, I do want to finally just acknowledge on a happy note, this past weekend, our students in the middle school performed the junior version of The Little Mermaid, and it was absolutely wonderful. We had a packed house here Friday night. We had another pretty large crowd Saturday night. Our students were absolutely brilliant. Considering our eighth graders now in their third year of middle school, this was their first live onstage performance as middle school students, and they performed to a full house and a crowd that was really excited to see their children perform and children in our school community perform. Mrs. Horowitz is here in the audience. Mrs. Horowitz, thank you. Thank you to Mrs. Stanton and Mr. Dorito for their efforts in putting on such a wonderful production. The feedback, I was standing with Mrs. Horowitz on the way out after the first night, Friday evening, and the feedback, we saw the tears in the eyes of families as they walked out. It was just so moving, so inspiring. So thank you, Mrs. Horowitz and your team, for just giving the children another step back toward a normal pre-pandemic, more pre-pandemic school experience. So just a wonderful, wonderful weekend for the performing arts here. What I'd like to do now is I have a slide presentation prepared for the board and for the community. And, Yvette, are we up? I don't quite have an angle yet. So this is, as I wrote in my newsletter to the community, I'm delivering this presentation on the feedback that my leadership team and I received over two presentations. The first presentation is, what did we hear? It really is just holding up a mirror to the comments that we received. So there will not be an action plan this evening, there will not be next steps this evening. This is purely what we heard during those meetings and the themes that emerged. So on the next slide, Presentation One, Presentation Two. Presentation Two, the date has not been determined at this point. There are just, there's a lot more that needs to happen before we can be in a position to share next steps in terms of conversations and further discussion and thought. On the next slide, you can see how many individuals registered for the meetings. Thirty-three Yorktown Central School District residents registered to meet with us. So everyone who signed up for a meeting was a resident of our school district catchment area. Twenty-four people actually attended, and the meetings ranged in size from one person to five community members. The meetings varied in duration, but they generally ran about an hour. At times, they were 75, 80 minutes, times even longer than that, but not by much. But generally, the meetings were approximately an hour in duration. There was also a digital component to the feedback that we requested. Seventy-two people participated in the digital online survey. I'll speak more about that at the end. The district representatives are on the slide there. Six members of my leadership team sat in on those meetings. They're all here tonight, so I thank you all for being here for this presentation. And now we go to the 14 takeaways. So the first, on the next slide, there was an acknowledgement that a lot of good work is already happening, and there were specific citations that were made with regard to the good work that's happening. So the cultural celebrations that are already happening, the recognition of holidays that are already happening, character education, E-steam was referenced, and how we continue to look at programs, existing programs, with a fresh lens. That was appreciated. The second thing that we heard, the second takeaway that we had, it appeared that there was universal support for the four principles that had been discussed since way back in July: kindness, respect, empathy, and understanding. All of the individuals with whom we met seemed open and accepting and in support of those four principles. On the next slide, there was an acceptance and appreciation for the definition of cultural awareness and equity. At the start of these meetings, there was often confusion, or there was often a different definition than how the school district had described cultural awareness and equity. Our definition is on the board. And cultural awareness, being aware and respectful of the diversity in our learning community, and equity, providing each individual student with reasonable and practical support and/or resources to be successful. So the example that I used was a student who's struggling in math may have a different set of supports put in place than a student who's struggling in ELA or in reading. So if we were to say everyone's going to get Math AIS, well, that may not be what every student needs. Students who require math support, that's what we'll do. Students who require ELA support, that's what we'll do. So it's looking at the individual child and what their needs are and designing supports to assist. On the next slide, what we heard, no group of students should be made to feel lesser of themselves. That was a message that came through throughout our meetings. On the next slide, we heard interest in parental involvement on cultural awareness and equity committees, whether it's a task force moving forward, a committee moving forward. That message came through very clearly, that parental involvement is, would be appreciated and is sought. On the next slide, we heard an appreciation of the assemblies and celebrations of diversity. So one example that came up often during our meetings were the international, is the International Night at the middle school, and how that's a wonderful celebration of the diversity in our school community. So that was just an example, which is why I highlighted that in the slide. On the next slide, one other thing that we heard, professional development for staff in the areas of cultural awareness and equity, to ensure that our teachers are equipped to have the training and the professional development in those areas. We also heard that whatever we do with regard to cultural awareness and equity needs to be age-appropriate. There are conversations that would be had at the early elementary grades that'll look far different than conversations that are had in the high school. So that's something that we heard very clearly from members of our community. There were mixed feelings on how much the school should teach and what is the role of the school. So that's what we heard, were mixed feelings. On the next slide, we heard that community members would like to see more information on curriculum. That's another thing that we heard through these meetings and discussed during the debriefing of the meetings. On the next slide, a good part of the conversation spoke about bullying, and one of the takeaways that we had were varied suggestions on how to resolve conflicts with students. It was interesting to hear the perspective of so many community members on how to resolve conflicts, especially those that stem from an ethnic or racial or religious incident. On the next slide, we heard, consider electives and after-school clubs in the area of cultural awareness and equity. And on the next slide, we heard, if speaking to the trials of one group, speak to the trials of other groups. And I think what's important here to acknowledge is that it's a 13-year journey in our school district. So not every group or not every situation will be discussed in one specific grade, but in the aggregate over the 13 years, it was an interesting conversation that emerged in terms of, well, if you speak about the circumstances that one group of people faced, well, what about this group? What about this situation? So that was something that our team took away. And finally, the last thing that we took away from these meetings was to review the State Education Department's culturally responsive and sustainable framework to determine what specifically would be used. Those are the 14 takeaways that we had from the in-person meetings that we had, and they're actually even takeaways from the digital survey. With the digital survey, there were 72 responses. Sixty-two of the 72 individuals reside within the Yorktown Central School District catchment area. Ten did not reside within the school district boundaries. However, everyone with whom we met in person did reside in the school district catchment area. The vast majority were current parents, and they were actually spread out across our schools, across the five schools, with the middle school actually having the greatest representation of parent responses, or community member responses. In terms of what we heard there, we heard much of what you heard here, and there were different perspectives on the work. There was some confusion as to what cultural awareness and equity was, what it wasn't, and so that's something that I'm hoping that will clarify. I thought we did clarify it. I believe the definitions do clarify it, but it's something that we know that we need to continue to clarify moving forward. That is my update for you with regard to what we heard. That is an objective summary of what our team heard. And what we did was the six members of the district leadership team sat down, spent some time going through what we heard in those meetings, and then tried to identify themes that came through, or tried to discern the information into takeaway areas that were specific, and that provided enough detail to convey what we heard clearly. So those were the 14 takeaways. Again, I want to thank the members of my leadership team, some on the stage here and some in the audience, for participating. When you think about 24 meetings that were each an hour, or 24 individuals who signed up, each meeting being at least an hour in duration, the meeting that to coordinate, the afterward debrief, there was a lot of time that people invested in this work, and it's because we're serious about the work. And so I appreciate the efforts and time from our team. I also appreciate members of our community taking time out of their day to meet with us, to share their perspective, to share their thoughts and their insights and their experiences. The stories we heard were remarkable in every regard. The stories were remarkable. So there's more work to do. I look forward to coming back to the board and to our school community to provide you with another update in terms of next steps, but I wanted to at least resume the conversation with you now that the meetings have concluded. So that is the presentation. On the next slide, the final slide, Presentation Two, it'll happen later this spring. We only have five board meetings left, so it's going to happen sooner rather than later. I just don't have an exact date at this point, and I want to be precise in the timeline that I provide to you. The second presentation will provide an overview of next steps. It will not be a very detailed, every step of the way timed out by the week. It'll be an overview of next steps, and it will take into consideration the 14 takeaways that you heard here tonight. So that message resonated with us, and you'll see those 14 items reflected in any action plan that we bring forward. That concludes my report. I don't have anything else to add at this time. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you the updates.
I want to thank you for this presentation, because it's been here, it's been a while. Can I just ask a quick question, and I'll ask the Board of any other questions? Can you just explain again why you started this process by having these meetings and the fact gathering, and what the district's goal is in starting it this way?
Sure, sure. I'll start, and then I'll ask Ms. O'Shea to piggyback on the answer. We heard loudly from our community that there was some reason for pause on the work, there were some misunderstandings on what was happening, there were different perspectives on what ought to happen and how we ought to proceed. We wanted to hear what our community had to say, and we thought that it was an appropriate point to pause the work within the buildings to hear, and when I say pause the work within the buildings, it's not paused. We continue to acknowledge the different holidays and celebrations and appreciate the diversity around us. But it was a good time from a committee standpoint, from a district standpoint, to take time out and hear what our community had to say. We wanted to make sure that the voice of the community is somehow incorporated into whatever next steps we move forward with. Lisa, do you want to add anything to that?
So I think in addition to what Dr. Hatter shared, we got to a point in our work where there was some confusion, there was some anger on different sides of what we were doing, and we really needed to take a moment to say, we need to bring people in, we need to listen to what they have to say so we can help further this work based on what we hear. What I really found so valuable in those meetings, the fact that you can sit quietly and actively listen to community members who came in and came in prepared to share their experiences and their thoughts in a forum that didn't always have agreement around all sides of the table, but in a respectful way. And that just showed us, you know, how important this work is and how invested so many in our community are and should be in how we move forward.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, it's not a question. Just thank you for presenting this, and I look forward to hearing what our next action step is.
Yes, and I just want to thank the entire Yorktown administrative staff that was on this committee for the hours that they put in, on top of all the other work they do on a daily basis. So we do thank you all for all of your hard work. So thank you. All right, so you finished the updates? All right, so we're going to, onto the budget. So tonight is the night we're supposed to adopt the budget. This is a legal date, it's not a choice the board makes as to when we adopt it. So we're going to start with just, I'm going to turn it over to Ron and Tom, I guess, for just an overview of the budget before we move forward.
Sure.
Tom, I'll start, and then you can piggyback on with any other additions. So at the last Board of Education meeting, I presented what's called the Superintendent's Budget. So what we do is meet with all of the different departments in our school district, the different building administrative teams, hear what the student needs are, and that's what drives our budget, our student needs. So as we met and heard, and the process began, in earnest, it began in November. So just as we're starting a school year, the process is underway. So after a series of meetings analyzing our enrollment numbers, and we continue to analyze our enrollment numbers, kindergarten specifically, because that's the most variable projection that we make, because the children are not yet enrolled in the school district and the school system, so it's not carrying one grade over to the next. So we continue to monitor our enrollment, we continue to monitor our student needs. There are some wonderful additions, I believe, to the program, the instructional program, specifically two courses, one in civil engineering and architect, and another in data science. I touched upon those in the updates I issued to the community at the end of last week, and that having had the opportunity to visit with our engineering course once last week, once the week before, there are some amazing things happening in that program, and we're building an engineering program that very few high schools have replicated. And now to infuse data sciences into our program really takes our work and esteem to the next level. We're looking at some special education additions, speech therapists, occupational therapists, special education teachers, teaching assistants to support our student needs. We're going to keep class sizes where, below the guidelines, below the Board of Education guidelines. We're infusing additional Chromebooks for two reasons. Number one, to replenish some of the obsolete Chromebooks and to expand our one-to-one initiative down to first grade. We're replacing 45 of the Sharp Interactive Digital Displays, which is the screen that we're looking at here, just because they're aging out, and we're on a replenishment cycle so that we can ensure that the technology remains continuous and seamless for our students. The budget-to-budget change, there are some, and Tom can speak to, the unfunded mandates that are really driving this budget, but the budget-to-budget increase is 6.77%. However, that will result in a tax rate increase in Yorktown estimated at 1.91%, a tax rate decrease in Newcastle at 4.72%, and a tax rate decrease of 1.18% in Cortland. And I just want to speak to this 1.91%. In two of the last six years, our tax rate, the levy increase has actually resulted in a tax rate decrease in the town of Yorktown. And that's something that I really commend the board on, to be so responsible to our taxpayers that we're decreasing taxes in two of the six years. It's not something that happens often in school settings, and I thank you for that. As a resident, I thank you for that as well. And that's the whole premise of our budget development process, is to design a budget that provides our students with what they need to be successful and opportunities for our students with a genuine sensitivity for taxpayers. And Tom, at this point, if there's anything else that you want to add to the overview?
Only that the budget is compliant with the tax cap legislation. The total tax levy for the school district will rise 2.02%. The allowable limit, based on the calculation, could have been 2.36%, but we'll come in just underneath that. And as Dr. Hatter said, the budget is sensitive to the needs of our students and recognizes the reality of significantly high inflation, which is why you see such a large budget-to-budget increase.
Thank you. Questions? Lisa?
Yeah, I have a question. It's for Tom. A couple of meetings ago, maybe the last meeting, I don't remember, we talked about the passage of the state budget and the impact it would have on us. Has that happened, and how does it change, or it doesn't change, what we've got?
So the, there is no budget out of Albany at this point, so the estimates that we're using for the state aid revenue are still the same as in the governor's original proposal. Our hope is that when they do finally enact a budget, there's no significant change in the revenue assessments we're using, or that there's some new piece of legislation with another mandated cost that we have not captured in the budget. Both of those circumstances, if they go in the wrong direction, will cause us to come back here and revise our numbers for the tax levy. It'll be too late for the budget vote, but we'll have to provide something for the tax levy.
Do you have any idea when that will be?
I had high hopes that we'd get a budget by last Friday, and at this point, I don't know. I haven't heard any word about an estimate of when they're going to deliver a budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cheryl, did you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question for Dr. Hatter. You had spoken about adding two new classes to the high school curriculum. How do we go about identifying which classes? And I guess more in the engineering program, how did we decide on that particular engineering class and the data sciences? But how do we typically go about that, and how do we decide on these two?
So I'll start, and then I'll ask Ms. O'Shea to speak to the specifics. So a third engineering course was part of a broader vision when, back in 2019, when we began offering an engineering program. We knew we didn't want to stop at one course. We liked the idea of a three-course sequence for students. So this was all part of a larger plan from several years ago that we enacted, and we were so appreciative of the board for supporting the new courses that we've offered in terms of, well, why civil engineering and architecture? Why data science? I'll speak to the data science piece, but Ms. O'Shea, do you want to speak to the civil engineering piece?
So as Dr. Hatter said, when we started this journey, I think 2018, we were looking at- at, how do we build an entire sequence of three courses? We didn't want it to be a one-and-done. And at that point in time, we went through Project Lead the Way, which we started our intro to engineering course. A year later, we did the principles of engineering course. We didn't start a new course last year, given we needed to slow down and, you know, assess where we were. When we were looking at a third option, there were several that we could have chosen, but when you look at the curriculum that the students engaged in, in the first two courses in the sequence, civil engineering seemed to be the next logical step. We also asked some of the students currently in the program for two years, who would be with us next year, what would they be most interested in? So that's how we wound up at civil engineering.
And with data sciences, these resulted from conversations who are experts in the field and people who really know the technology, whether it's staff who are parents in the district, or whether it's colleagues in the region who are superintendents in the region. Data sciences, so there are two pieces here. Data sciences are booming, and it's permeating just about every aspect of life, and machine learning, and artificial intelligence, and understanding it is such an important part. And we're seeing that children who graduate our high school are going on to major in engineering, who are going on to study data sciences, and we thought it would be prudent to have data sciences available for our students here as high school students. However, the other part to this conversation is our science research program. Our science research program will offer students some really authentic opportunities to engage in some high-level research. In fact, you saw Naomi here last week presenting her research, and that was remarkable. Data sciences is a nice course, in my estimation, that can support our science research program as well, where someone can take that course, and that'll refine their performance in science research. So there are a few reasons behind, well, why data sciences, but it is a really, really growing field at this point.
Freshman?
So I had a question on the health insurance. I know when we had first presented the budget in the series, so I think it had gone from 6% to 8%. Is that set in stone at this point, or did it move?
The 8% is what is in the budget currently. There has been no move from that escalated premium increase. I'll just note one more time for the record that our school district voted no in the consortium. We thought that the 6% was sufficient to handle liability estimation, but we were outvoted, and we were in the minority, so the 8% is reflected in the budget.
I'll echo that. Again, we did, I sit on that board. I have a seat on that board, and we voted no for that 8% increase. We thought that there were other approaches and other cost-saving measures that could be exercised first before a rate increase of that extent. Again, I believe the vote was 9-4. We were on the four side of that vote. But yes, at this point, there have not been any changes, and that's the number that the consortium is sticking with.
Because it is significant. I mean, yeah. All right. Thank you.
The 2% change was worth another quarter of a million dollars in the budget, yes.
Another reason why we voted no on that increase.
Thank you.
Mike?
I had a question. We had talked several meetings ago, when we did the athletic presentation, about adding the boys volleyball team. Did we include that in the budget?
Yes, but I didn't include it in my presentation, and my apologies for that. So yes, the boys volleyball team will be added to, yes, we did discuss it at the athletic director's presentation, and yes, that was included. It was a very modest cost for the program, so I tried to highlight the big expenditures in the presentation. But yes, boys volleyball will be part of our athletic offerings come the fall.
I have a follow-up question to that, to Jackie's question. So I know when Mr. Barrett was here, he had said that it would be one varsity team, but if there's sufficient demand, you know, from the underclassmen, would we consider adding a second team? Is there room in the budget, or what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, the cost is so modest for the additional position. So I certainly, I don't want to promise yes, but I certainly would anticipate that if enough of a demand is there, we would offer the program to support the student interest.
Great.
Yeah, that's the other part of it, is many schools don't have a JV team. Many schools don't have a boys varsity volleyball program to begin with, so we're limited on the number of varsity teams, but we're also limited on the number of JV teams. They may only have a couple of teams to play, but certainly if there was student demand, we would figure out something to support that interest.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of excitement with the high schoolers on this. I think that's awesome. Thank you.
One of the nice things that, we're redoing some work in the middle school gym this summer, and one of the things we are doing is making it so that the volleyball nets can, they're going to be grounded into the ground, so there will be an actual second court now that we have extra teams. One other question, unless somebody else has another question? The capital reserve project, proposition will go on the budget. Can we talk about, a little bit about that?
Sure. Tom, do you want to start on the capital reserve, and I'll finish up from there?
Sure. The initially funded capital reserve that voters authorized a few years ago of $12 million has been expended. The last of the projects are being done this summer. So we have, we're putting another proposition on this May's ballot to renew the reserve for $12 million over another additional 10-year period. We've been so successful with the current reserve that we just went through, that we thought, especially in an era of increasing interest rates for borrowing money, that it made a great deal of sense, both from the ability to be nimble and reacting to capital needs very quickly, and to be able to save taxpayers a great deal of money. It's worth noting that over the course of this $12 million that was funded through the capital reserve without having to borrow, we estimated that even at the lower borrowing rates that existed during that time period, taxpayers were saved about $1.5 million over the next 15 years. With interest rates rising even further, you can extrapolate that to even greater savings over the next 15 years.
And in my March 30th update to the school community, I spoke to some of the specific projects that were completed as a result of having this fund. There is a place to have a school bond for larger-scale projects, so I don't want to dismiss the idea of a bond, because it certainly has its place, but the capital reserve gives us a lot of leverage and flexibility to be able to fund smaller-scale projects without bearing the interest costs, the legal fees associated with bonding. And I included, for anyone who is interested in viewing, I included before and after pictures of the gymnasium prior to the renovation, then after the renovation. And it's just remarkable, and that's just what happens with the capital reserve funds. And just a note, we have to clearly identify what the projects are in advance. It goes through a approval process at the board level, and then in order to withdraw the monies from the capital reserve fund, it requires voter authorization. So there's another opportunity to engage residents in that conversation.
And it works very, it works exactly the same for SED approval. Until the voters authorize us to spend the monies and withdraw it, we can't start to send the projects up to SED and get them approved and get them
Exactly.
Done. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Are we
Good to have a vote on the adoption?
All right. Can I have a, resolve that the annual school district budget for the fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $108,805,000, and the requisite portion thereof be raised by taxation on the taxable property of the district be approved?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have some action items. A motion to approve the following budget vote and election resolutions as stated below. Be it resolved, the resolution approved at the board on March 21, 2022, appointing election inspectors and workers for the May 17, 2022. Vote is amended by appointing Fatima Ahmed, who is a qualified voter of the district, as a chief election inspector, and Mary Berlin as an election inspector. And then B, be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Yorktown School District, appoint the following individuals as election inspectors and/or alternate election inspectors for the 22 annual school budget, district budget vote and election to be compensated at a flat rate of $300 for the day, and their names are listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel on recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have part-time and temporary appointments, in addition to the substitute list and a correction. And under classified personnel, we have additions to the substitute list.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Business office. A motion to approve the following contract for health and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools in other school districts for the 2021-22 school year.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the following budget transfers that are listed below?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tax report card. Whereas the New York State education law requires that the district prepare and approve and make publicly available the 2022-23 property tax report card. Therefore, resolve that the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District approves a 2023 property tax report card and authorizes the superintendent to publish it in accordance with the law.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the lease agreements for the central administration and PPS posted machines as stated below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is for the Brookside Boilers. Whereas the Board of Education authorized replacement of the boilers at the Brookside Elementary School on an emergency basis at the board meeting on January 24, 2022, using unappropriated unassigned fund balance for such purpose. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby appropriates the sum of $667,387 from unassigned fund balance in the general fund to pay for the emergency boiler replacements, and authorizes the district treasurer to transfer such funds from the budget code to the revenue side of the 21-22 school district budget appropriated fund balance code and to the expenditure side of the 21-22 school budget transfer to capital fund budget code, thereby increasing the budget to $102,573,387.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Placements. A motion to approve the placements as of April 4, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the out-of-district placement contracts for the 21-22 school years as stated below?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion accept the following gifts, grants, and donations with gratitude at Yorktown High School, a Verve percussion bell and snare learning kit with rolling cart from Ida Tucheron, $1,950 from the varsity ski team parents to offset the cost of ski lift tickets, $5,000 from Bloomberg First, the Yorktown High School robotics team to attend the first New York City NYC Regional Robotics Competition, $2,718 from Eagle Scout Shane Gannon, and $1,359, which is going to the Yorktown High School Band Department, and $1,359 to the Yorktown High School Social Studies Department. At Crompon, $2,000 from the Crompon PTA for the fifth-grade trip to the Klondike, and at Brookside, $1,547 from the Brookside PTA to a school trip to Hannah over Hilltop Farm.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much. We're up to board comments. Mike?
No, I'm quiet today. Thank you.
Freshman?
I'm good, thanks.
Cheryl?
I just wanted to say thank you for tonight's update on the cultural awareness and equity task force and all the work that you've done around that. Definitely look forward to our next steps later in this school year. I also wanted to talk about, this past weekend, we had many students go forward for their NISM adjudication. They're receiving their scores back this week, and I anticipate lots of great scores, so good work. And we continue to move forward in performing arts, sports, and all of our in-person events, and it's nice to see that we're back, and it just feels like everything's getting back to normal now.
Lisa?
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations to Tom for completing your last budget process.
That was it?
That's enough.
I wanted to thank everybody. I wanted to also thank the administration and the book review committees. It's a lot of hard work, and again, we're putting extra work on people to do this. I know the community thinks it's slow, but it's a steady process that has to be done in a specific way, so I thank the committee for getting through two books, and I look forward to the rest of them as we get through them. So thank you very much. Ron, Tom, Lisa, anything else? We are up to public comment number two. Yvette? Nobody? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night.